Do you want to do that now? Because we're supposed to leave.
Trustee Phillips, the hands that are raised, what are those no longer--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--taken into consideration, or are we going to do those?
When you say the hands that are raised, I'm sorry, I need to change my screen because I'm not seeing all of you together. And I'm sorry if there's board members.
No, not board members. There's hands in the attendees. Are we not doing, are we already through that process? Are we not doing those hands that are raised? Because if we're not, I think we need to let the public know, or whatever process we're in. You have, I don't know, six hands raised right now?
So we have completed public comment on this item. We were in the board comments.
That's what I thought.
In a new item, so--
I just, you just scared the mess out of me. I just thought, did we just do all that without having a public comment? You literally scared me.
So the, the hands that are raised now, they will not be taken this evening, Dr. Wolf? Or will they be taken when we get back from closed session?
They would have, we would have to be on a different item, and they could speak to that item. But this item's public comment already was completed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, board, you want to go on the closed session now and tap out for tonight? It was a long-- All right, Reckler?
I committed to one, so with, however you would like to use the time.
Okay.
President Phillips, if we go into closed session and come back out, are we not going to do board comments at the end? Just because of the time? I just want to preview that. If we are, I want to know. If we're not, I want to know.
So let's, you're right. So let's do this. Let's move on to, let's do two things. This is what I think we can make this work. Let's back up just a little bit. Is, was Marcy Williams here for item E1?
Or whoever-- I may have to get her attention, but what do you, what do you want, what do you want to know about it?
If you, because this is a first reading for a potential board policy. This is something we can do quick. So if you could present item E1 as a first reading, right? You don't have to necessarily read the whole thing, but you've done this before, right? So if you do item E1, we could at least do that piece of business.
Sure.
All right, I can do that. Can somebody bring it up on the screen?
Yeah, it's coming up.
Okay. Sorry, I closed everything down. I thought we were-- All right, good evening. So this is the first reading for this board policy for 119.11 Sexual and Gender-Based Harassment. We need to update our board policies every time state regulations change or state and federal laws. So as you may remember, back in May of 2020, the Federal Board of Education changed the Title IX policies. And so with those changed regulations and policies, we need to update our board policy around sexual and gender-based harassment in terms of, to match those. So I can mention three quick things that have changed because of it. There are some minor word changes, but basically the new Title IX regulations make significant changes to the definition of sexual harassment by defining it more narrowly in a manner deemed by the U.S. Department of Education. It is also revised to clearly define sexual harassment under Title IX in district policy, and it sets forth a roadmap for how the various types of complaints will be processed. It also is revised to include procedures for implementing preventative measures and record-keeping practices in this policy. Those are farther down. And then it does, it only, it does not only apply to students, but also employees as well. So that's the main set of changes that are outlined in this board policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Williams, board, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing that, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have two hands coming up.
Okay, two, and that's it. Let's--
All right, first one, Jean Kinsner on this item.
Good morning, board. I, um, yeah. I'm hoping that this will include pronouns and other things that have been added to California state sexual harassment. And it just breaks my heart to found, to hear that an African-American male in our district keeps being called their first name in front of students by staff, even when he asks to be called his last name. So if we can't get that straight, I really hope we can get pronouns straight and that straight, because both of these things are very, very important.
Our second public comment, Christina Baronian.
Y'all hear me?
Yeah.
This is Christina Baronian, fourth grade at Lincoln. I'm just going to go ahead and say right now, I'm so glad for these new guidelines and the expansion of all the definitions and everything. And what I just witnessed on this board meeting is absolutely disgusting. The fact that I just watched Mr. Phillips stare down O3 for how many minutes? It was gross.
We need to keep the comments to--
And that's fine. I will stop, but that needs to be said because that was disgusting, which is typical.
That will conclude public comment.
Thank you very much. Is there any board discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no board discussion on this item, we're going to move--
I do want to make sure that we honor the fact about the pronouns. Make sure that we're, we're paying very close attention to uplifting and making sure that we are in full centering and consideration of the pronouns.
Okay. This is going to come back too.
Yes.
Right, so, uh, any other board comments? Okay, so we're going to move to, try to move to another item and then get back in. Okay, so the last thing is C5 was pulled. Trustee Reckler, you, but then you made comments about it later. So is it okay for us to move forward now, or do you need, do you have like questions still that you need?
I don't have any questions. I pulled it to be transparent, and so the board could ask questions and have Dr. Wolf here. The one that's the most serious to me is the safety plans. I know it's been addressed. It's in the, it's in the audit, but you know, that was just it to sunlight it and pull out some of the, you know.
Okay, do any board members, before I do this, do any board members have questions about C5? Okay, so let's go to C5 really quick. It just, and then, and then we're going to jump out and hear what staff has to say in closed session and jump back in and go home.
So there's nothing to present. It's our annual financial audit. It was an unmodified opinion. We did have some findings. Findings are good because they force us to improve our practices as we presented to the Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you, sir. No questions. That's a board. I already asked you guys. Any public comment on this item?
No hands raised.
Okay, on to board. Discussion, board, can I have a motion to, it's not adopt, it's to receive this report? This audit report. Can I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved. I think it's accept, right, Dr. Wolf?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Reckler and seconded by Gonzalez Hoi. Any discussion, board? Okay, no discussion. On to the vote, just--
Reckler, yes.
Smith-Holmes, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Leon, yes?
Phillips, yes. Okay, so what we're going to do now, that concluded the consent calendar. We have a couple of things left over. We just have to get them on another meeting or schedule something that's special or something. But we'll double back on that with you guys. We're going to actually recess to closed session. I need to very quickly just disclose what we're recessing for. And we're returning to closed session. There's one item. It's conference with labor negotiators. Dr. Wolf, is there any public comment for this one item?
No hands raised.
Okay, so public, we're going to recess back into closed session. We will come back and report out if there's anything to report out and then adjourn the meeting. But that's all that we will be doing for the rest of this evening, and that'll happen in approximately 12 minutes. So board, we're going back into closed session right now.